Cello, Doherty.
Here.
Milligan.
Here.
Gaines.
Here.
Martino.
Here.
Narcisse.
Here.
Troncoso, Walker.
Here.
Barrios.
Here.
Binnings.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we do have a quorum at this time. We are missing two members. If you would like to appoint two alternates.
Yes, let's appoint two alternates.
We are appointing Nick Binnings and Harold Barrios.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, public announcements. Please silence all phones and electronic devices. Appeals, if you have an appeal disagree with the commission, you have the right to appeal it to the council. If you wish to speak on an item, there are speaker cards over on the railing to my right. You need to complete one of those and turn it in to staff and they will get it up here to us. Public speaking, five minutes each side and three minutes for rebuttal. You're welcome to exit the building after your case is heard or you're welcome to stay for the rest of the agenda. Pursuant to section 200 dash H, I'm sorry, 200 dash 2H9F of the Unified Development Code, members of the audience shall observe the following rules of conduct and decorum while the meeting is in progress. Refrain from talking to other members in the audience in a loud or otherwise disruptive manner. Refrain from initiating private conversations with commission members, staff, or legal counsel. Refrain from approaching the podium unless invited to do so by the chairman. Refrain from engaging in any behavior which is not in keeping with proper courteous conduct. Refrain from cheers, jeers, applause, or any expressions of approval or disapproval of comments made by any speakers or any actions taken by the commission. Refrain from discussing matters not on the published agenda unless proper procedures have been followed in adding that item to the agenda. Refrain from bringing any objects into the building and auditorium where the planning meeting is to be held that are disruptive to the meeting. The chairman shall take whatever action is necessary to ensure that these rules are observed and the meeting proceeds in an orderly manner. Please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Seeger and the pledge by Commissioner Narcisse.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the beauty and glory of this day. We ask that you envelop the victims of Hurricane Helene in your cloak of comfort as they resolve to rebuild their lives and communities. We pray that you protect the lives of those on the path of Milton, remembering that we are one nation under God and that despite our many differences, we all believe red, white, and blue. Bless the first responders, National Guard, medical staff, and linemen across our country and especially here in our fair parish. We ask that you influence us as we strive to serve the best interests of our parish here tonight. Amen.
Amen.
Blessed be the name of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent.
Lady, do you have any? Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the September meeting minutes. Commissioner Orsmont.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Orsmont to accept the minutes as printed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Gaines. Please vote.
Motion to accept the minutes as written carries.
Thank you. All right, do we have any postponements, Helen?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. Item number 10 on page three, we have a request to postpone for one month, 2024-3997 PP. Mr. Paul Marone is here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, let's read it into the record. This is a case 2024-3997-PP, Regalities Estates Waterfront Villas, Phases 1 and 2. Developer owner succession of Fred J. Secur, care of Shelby LaSalle, engineer surveyors JV Berksen Associates, parish council district representative, Honorable Jeff Corbin. General location, the property is located south of Highway 433, west of US Highway 90, Slide L, Ward 8, District 13. Mr. Marone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Paul Marone, on behalf of Mr. Seeger, we're requesting that this matter be tabled to your next meeting. We've received the staff comments. There are a number of items that we need additional time to be able to work through to address those items. We're also waiting on some responses from DOTD and from State Department of Health and Hospitals regarding our utility plan. So all of those are in the works, but we could not get those ready for you this evening and staff in time to review them. So we'd ask that the matter be tabled till next month so that we have the time to get those items in to staff for review prior to you being asked to make a decision on our request.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience against postponing this for one month? Okay, I want to close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Seeger.
I move to postpone case 2024-3997 PP for one month.
All right, we got a motion to postpone this for one month for Mr. Marone's request. Commissioner Robert.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Robert. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion to postpone for one month carries.
Thank you. Helen, anything else?
No.
Okay. All right, we go to page two, minor subdivisions, item one. Case is 2024-3954-MSP, minor subdivision of 35.58 acres into parcels A, B, C, and D. Owner and representative is Gregory P. Harvin and Leslie Harvin, Surveyors Land Surveying LLC, parish council district representative, Honorable Pat Phillips. General location, the property is located on the end of Williamsburg Drive at the end of Salem Drive, Mandeville, Ward 4, District 5. This was postponed from the September 10th Planning Commission meeting.
The applicant is requesting to create four parcels, being parcel A, B, C, and D. And the minor subdivision request requires a public hearing due to the subject property is on L1 Large Lot District, which requires a minimum lot width of 150 feet. The minimum lot width of the proposed parcel B is 60 feet along Williamsburg and requiring a waiver from the Planning Commission. The property, subject property is on L1, a large lot district, which is a minimum, requires a minimum lot width of 150 feet and the minimum lot width for proposed parcel A is 18 feet along Salem Drive and requiring a waiver from the property, from the Planning Commission. As shown on the survey, parcels C and D are proposed to be accessed from a 60-foot private right-of-way. And the proposed name of the existing private road and the 60-foot right-of-way depicted on the survey shall be granted approval by the Planning Commission and the proposed name is Williamsburg Drive Private, has been submitted to the St. Tammany Parish Communication District and approved. So the request shall be subject to the listed items on your staff report, items 1 to 10.
Okay. All right, are the Harvins here?
Yeah.
Okay, please accept the mic. Good evening.
Good evening.
You heard the staff report?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything to add or?
No, sir. I just want to try to get going forward with this.
Get it on the roll, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this? Anyone wish to speak against? Okay, come to the microphone, state your name and address.
My name is Leveer Montgomery. I live at 11 Mistletoe Drive in Covington. And I'm an owner of 60 acres that's south of this piece. And on your map, your aerial map, you'll see it's in the southeast corner. One of my, it's in a critical drainage area and it's, there's significant drainage problems. And I'm concerned, I'm going to ask that y'all, well, first let me say the parish planning department did offer us an opportunity, excuse me, to meet with Mr. Harvin. They did, the parish did a great job, brought in assistant district attorneys, engineering folks, very helpful. But unfortunately, we really didn't resolve any issues in that effort. We all tried. They're asking for at least two waivers and I oppose that. I think there's a better way to develop this property than the way he's going about it. We do have a 60-foot right-of-way in servitude on the south portion and on your map you'll see that where it shows parcel B and parcel, I think, C. One of the other issues, if by chance y'all feel compelled to move this forward with approval, the private road is only required to have 35 feet width, but we do have a 60-foot right-of-way in servitude. So what I would ask, if you feel compelled to move it forward, is to make sure that the road, the private road that's put in, is in the middle of the 60 feet so that if ever, anytime, we want to come back and put a hard surface road on it, we've already got the base in place. And I think that's the idea of the private road. But if it's allowed to be 35 feet on the south side of this 60-foot right-of-way, that creates a problem for sure in the future. And so I would ask that it would be in the middle if it's permitted. But I am opposed to it and I, there is no maintenance agreement in place. There's a number of issues that I realize have been identified. It's subject to the above and below comments. So we'll see, we'll see how that works out. But I'm opposed to it, so I'd ask that it be denied. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else opposed to it? Okay, come to the microphone. Did you fill out a speaker card?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you are?
My name is David Kutchy. Thanks again for your time and consideration tonight. First, I live at 329 Williamsburg, which is the southwest corner of the development that is about to happen. I want to go record first is that I am not for or against it. I know one of the builders who built the fantastic house down the street, I'd love to see that happen. However, and I sent an email of my observations and concerns, number one, we already have significant flooding. I sent pictures to Ms. Lambert and to show those pictures, I also have videos of even the light rain with Irene was already coming up my property. On January 8th of this year, it was all the way up 90 feet from the ditch to the front of my house walkway. So my concern is that as whatever's developed there, we're going to have more water flowing through. And Ms. Roberts, thank you for the elevation, it's coming that way and it's coming south. So I'm just bringing up those concerns again. Also, some of my neighbors who are here, one has been here in the neighborhood when there were eight houses for 32 years and has noticed the water is a major problem, so it's not new. I've only been in that neighborhood for eight years. And I've already witnessed the water coming up in places and even on my property. And so I sent some pictures too of the culverts that were right near my neighborhood because I'm on a big ditch canal and two of the five are completely clogged. And that was even after the storm, after the cleaning. So if, the big point is to try to get a better plan of drainage. I mean, I wish I could comment more on the road. I think it's viable, but wherever it's going to happen, you can see that water is going to have to go somewhere. Okay, and again, I'm not either for or against it. I'd rather see him develop the nice six-acre lots instead of 160 acres back there, 160 houses, but they'd have the same problem. So I appreciate your time on that. I don't want to take up any more time. But again, I have videos. I hope you had some pictures that you received and that was just the beginning of it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak against? The lady back there has her hand up before you did. Please state your name.
My name is Debbie Canizero and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm the neighbor who's been living there for 32 years. I know I don't look old enough to have done that, but my husband and I bought in Heritage Heights in 1991, started building our house in 92. There were eight houses in Heritage Heights. Those were the old days of Mandeville when there was not even a red light on Highway 59, right? There was a caution light. And so what we have witnessed through the years is that drainage is a problem. When we first bought our lot and built our home, we were in flood zone C. Now we're in flood zone A. And so we have witnessed with all the construction, we've seen the majority of the homes built in Heritage Heights and there is a definite water problem. There's a definite flooding issue in our neighborhood. Grand Mason was developed. They, their water comes in and drains through Heritage Heights. And so with all of the development that we've had, it has definitely caused issues. And I wanted to say to Mr. and Mrs. Harvin, I was so relieved when I found out it was only going to be eight lots because there were so many rumors going on in the neighborhood that it was going to, I had heard 30. And so we were so concerned. We have a quality of life in Heritage Heights. I mean, my son lives around the corner. My neighbor across the street, her son lives. I mean, we really are a family in that subdivision. And so I support their development of only eight lots because, as Dr. Kutchy said, I would, I'm so relieved that it's only that. But the best of both worlds is to allow this family to do this, but solve the flooding issues. We can't ignore the flooding. I know St. Tammany is all about development, but we can't ignore the flooding or we're going to have some serious problems. And my friends, the Kutchys, they're right at the end. I'm on Williamsburg Drive, but I'm further up towards 59. They are right there. Another beautiful family is right there. And I mean, it's a problem. And if that can be solved, then this is really going to be a happy ending to a story for everyone. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. We've got another gentleman.
Two minutes.
Two minutes, okay. And you are Charles?
Charles Becknell, B-E-C-N-E-L, but Jason, landowner to the property. And my main concerns is that it further limits the adjoining landowners that if we want to subdivide, now we have to put a public road in versus a private road on that, in that area. Especially if he puts the, his private road in the south side, then it forces us really, for that 60-foot right-of-way, to really rebuild the whole thing as a public road versus just trying to take the middle, you know, try to at least expand on what he put in there. And also there's, there's a ditch on the south side of that road. So if only one ditch is required, the water runs north to south. So it's going to take that road with it as it runs toward north to south. The private road is going to, you know, keep deteriorating if there's only one ditch on the south side. So that's all I have to say. Thank y'all very much for the time and opportunity.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak against? All right, we'll go to rebuttal. Mr. Harvin.
The drainage issue is a whole nother issue. It has nothing to do with the six, I mean, five lots that I'm planning on cutting out. Actually, Mr. Leveer gets one of those lots, so there's only four homes that can be built on that piece of property. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And those that spoke against, do you have any rebuttal? Esther?
Just to eliminate some confusion, when Mr. Harvin said, "I get one of the five lots," I mean, I own 60 acres and I have a right on that road. It is divided and you can only have five parcels on that road, but it's not like somebody's giving me a lot. I mean, it already exists there. And so, so do the Becknells. And again, we're to the south side and I'm very concerned about what's going to happen over the future. I don't think it's a good development plan myself. So I hope that y'all don't give him variances. I think he can come back with a better program. And I'm not against development. I'm involved with some development elsewhere. So, but I've seen, I know there'd be a better plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've had rebuttal on both sides, so I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Seeger.
I, I have some questions that can't be answered at this time. With this number of comments, staff comments that need to be addressed at this time, I don't think, for things like naming, that's one thing. But I'd like to see the, or number three, the location of all the ditches and waterways. I'd like to see, number four, the location of the natural areas to be retained. I'd like to see, number eight, the location of the turnaround and cul-de-sacs. And 10, I'd like to see what the private drive that we're talking about, that you alluded to a few moments ago. I'd like to see some of that so that I can make a little bit better informed decision. So I'd like to move that we postpone this until those issues can be answered. And this is not a condemnation of the development. I just think there's too much unknown stuff here for me to make an informed decision.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Seeger to postpone until some questions are answered by staff. For one month. Brittany Robert.
Yes, I just first want to say, first of all, Mr. Harvin, I understand it is not your responsibility to fix drainage in the adjacent subdivision. My sole concern is the road surface and drainage where it connects to the existing Williamsburg Drive. Overall, the density on this is wonderful. I mean, you couldn't ask for six and a half acre lots. That's, that's great. I'm all for that. I guess my question is actually more for engineering. Is there any requirement in our current code of ordinances that would compel Mr. Harvin to have to submit some type of hydrologic study for that, just that one specific area where those culverts are? Because I know it's also not Mr. Harvin's responsibility to improve parish drainage. So, you know, what I would like to see, more than anything else, I'm not opposed to the re-subdivision of these parcels. I'm not even opposed to the 60-foot right-of-way. It's just, I would love to see some beefed-up drainage, so to speak, for lack of a better term, on that specific portion of the private right-of-way.
So I'll answer that question in two parts. So the requirements for the private drive do state that the roadway and the associated drainage of the roadway needs to be performed by a professional engineer.
Correct.
And so the engineer of record for the, you know, assuming approval goes through and they submit all the required documentation to get a work order, right? We're working in assumption right now. That engineer of record would have to produce calculations and say this size culvert's needed here where it's going to connect to the existing road. The culverts for each individual lot needs to be this size. Now, for the lots themselves, no, there's not a drainage study requirement for a minor subdivision of this size. They will have to do a drainage plan with each individual home. Now, but that drainage plan is, you know, which was required for the permitting aspect of the home, not for the overall minor subdivision.
Yeah, that's not.
So the only real drainage study is required for a minor subdivision in a private drive would be the culvert sizing and the associated drainage information for the roadway itself. I don't know if that helps answer your question or not.
It does, yes.
Aside from that, there's a whole bunch in this area that the parish is working on that is not at all tied to or referenced for this minor subdivision. It's just, we know the issues of 59, we know the issues of Fountain Blue, we know the issues of Heritage Mountain, all of these over here. We have a lot of studies going on along the 59 corridor.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Harvin, from what it sounds like to me, since the engineering would be required regardless, like Mr. Reynolds said, you know, you still have to have an engineered drainage plan for that road itself. And it sounds like the only objection from the majority of the people who have spoken here is that they're concerned about drainage too. And it seems like you have an opportunity to maybe put those folks in touch with the engineer to see if two birds can be killed with one stone and potentially get this through a little bit easier, especially if it's something as simple as sizing a culvert a different way or, you know, sloping the ditches on the side of the road. In that case, I would be all for this. Again, I mean, you've got all the room in the world to mitigate. I'm not super concerned about that. Six and a half acre parcels. So, that's all.
Okay. Commissioner Orsmont.
Yes, I have a question for staff. Out of fairness, just my question's for fairness. Can we come back and ask for some of these comments that you have in here to be done before we really make a decision? Can we? I mean, is that out of fairness as well or is this going to, we're expecting this to be done, I get that, and once it's, for approval. But just to treat the petitioner of fairness, is that something we can ask and say, hey, we'd like to see some more of these done before we actually move forward?
Well, it's a yes and a no answer. Basically, as, you know, I would like to ask Mrs. Vellis to address the issue of, in the event that there's a request to postpone because there's a new regulation in that regard. So I think that might be the first, you know, answered, you know, question to answer. But also, you know, all the requirements will have to be met that are listed here on a staff report. And I think that was a concern about the location of the road and I just confirmed with Mr. Reynolds where it will have to be built in the middle of the right-of-way. You're welcome to ask more questions because I'm not an engineer, but I asked a question anyway. But I'm going to let Mrs. Vellis answer the question in regards to the postponement.
Right, so according to the Code of Ordinances, section 800-2.2D6, postponement, the Planning and Zoning Commission can postpone a decision to a subsequently regularly scheduled meeting. However, the Planning and Zoning Commission has 60 days from the acceptance of a complete application by the Department of Planning and Development to approve the final subdivision plot. Otherwise, the final subdivision plot shall be deemed to have been approved pursuant to Louisiana Revise Statute 33:113. And this has already been postponed from the September meeting. And I guess, Ms. Helen, you can give us the date of when you receive the complete application.
And that's, that would be my question, whether or not I would second that. That's exactly it.
So it was submitted on time, which was, the original meeting was on September?
10.
Thank you. So it would have been submitted early August and it was submitted on time, so it's been, the time is? What is subject to? Unless if, you know, Ms. Erin brought up a point here is that since we do not have, we have the application form, we have the survey. Normally or in the past, the Planning Commission has approved minus subdivision subject to all the staff comments that are listed. Now we'll return the question to Mrs. Vellis here, is that since we do not have the plans for, for the road, does it constitute a completed application?
I would have to look at that further. Be, and sort of how it's defined in the, in the code, how a complete application is defined. And if that's not defined, then the common use of that term. Out in abundance of caution, I would recommend, as the final decision maker, that the commission do, do make, does make an actual decision and that the decision can be appealed to the parish council.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, so my, my decision or my move would be to deny.
Okay, so you're coming forward with a new motion to deny in lieu of postponing?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Narcisse.
That came out of left field. Can you explain why? Because I'm trying to, I'm trying to wrap my mind around the whole thing. You don't, you're under no obligation to explain. The objection the gentleman had in front was because the, the road, if I understand this correctly, the road was a private road, private driveway that was on the other gentleman's property, and you would like it to be in the middle so that it would be equal access in the future, future planning, correct? Is that what I'm thinking? No?
The current timber road, for lack of a better word, is actually on the south side of the 60-foot right-of-way and servitude. And yes, if it's going to be permitted, I'd definitely like it to be, the road to be in the middle of the 60 feet, and then you can have adequate to put ditches and everything.
And I think staff just said that it would have to be there to go with it, right?
That's correct, and I'll let, I'll let Ted answer a little bit better in that regards.
Yes, sir. It's just, it's common practice that we require the road to be centered within the right-of-way or the servitude, or wherever that road is being constructed, so that we don't cause any adverse impact to adjacent properties north, south, east, west, and that if ditching is needed on one or both sides, we have adequate right-of-way or servitude to allow for that ditching.
Gotcha. So, I've heard objections as far as flooding, which is a parish engineering issue that they're, that they're currently working on, and I've heard the one objection as far as the road, which is going to be resolved because of just ordinance and court, things. Everybody else said, hey, they're in favor of the beautiful houses that, that has already been built by the developer, and they're very pleased by the density of it. I too would like to see the plans a little bit better, however, given the constraints of everything else, I'm going to go for the trifecta and make a motion to approve. So, we got a motion to approve, a motion to postpone, and a motion to deny. This is going to be fun. We'll see which one gets a second.
Okay. All right. Mr. Gaines.
So, I have a, I have a question for staff. I've heard several comments based on the number of lots that are going to be here, and maybe I have an inaccurate plat design, but I see four. How many, how many lots are there?
Just to, just to answer your question.
Well, I heard the petitioner come up and say five, so that's why I'm questioning.
So, if you look at the end of Salmon Drive, there's a request to...
Is that the turnaround?
At the end of Salmon Drive, there's a request to create parcel A. However, at the end of Williamsburg Drive, there's a request to create parcel B, C, and D. If you look just a little further down, you have a 61.25 acre parcel owned by Mr. Montgomery, and you also have a 31 acre parcel owned by, which is stated here as Margaret Becknell. So, basically, the construction of the private road allows you to, it's only for five parcels. So, he's requesting to create three parcels and has to provide access to the two existing parcels here, the 31 acre and the 61 acre parcel.
So, the, the five parcels that are being accessed by the new public road are the B, C, and D, and the two parcels that are, that are south of the road that are owned by the separate owners. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And parcel A is going to be accessed through Salmon Drive?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clarification. I agree with my colleague, Commissioner Roberts, as well, on the drainage. I think that that is going to be resolved, that, you know, it says the approval is subject to the comments, and part of that is the engineering study to make sure that the drainage is going to, going to be effective on the road. Now, Ted, I have a question about, it says one or one, a ditch on either side, one or two ditches. Is that the termination going to be decided by engineering? When they're putting the load in, they do a drainage study to see how that's going to flow across, whether, which side the ditch needs to be on? I just wanted to address the comment on, that the gentleman had on, if it was on the south side, the road's going to be washed away, so engineering's going to take care of that in their study. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Subject to, subject to the comments from staff being met and the waivers, I make a motion to approve.
Motion, motion.
I make a second to approve.
Say that again, John.
I second the motion to approve, subject to comments from staff being verified and the waivers.
Same for you, Mr. Narcisse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, John?
Nothing further.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Please vote. That's with the waivers, right?
Motion to approve with waivers carries.
And we go to item two. This is case 2024-3980-MSP, minor subdivision of 11.405 acres into parcels A and B. Owner representative is Carol M. Holesworth. Surveyor is John G. Cummings and Associates, Parish Council District Representative, Honorable David Kugel. General location, the property is located on the east side of Holesworth Lane, south of Pine Street Extension, Borough River, Ward Eight, District Nine. Staff?
The applicant is requesting to create two parcels, being parcel A, 2.046 acres, and parcel B, which is proposed to be 9.359 acres. And the minor subdivision requests, requires a public hearing due to parcels A and B are proposed to be accessed from a private roadway identified as Holesworth Lane, and requiring a waiver from the private drive requirements in, listed in Section 900-3-2-L. And the requested minor subdivision should be subject to items one, two, three, and four. I'd like to invite you to take a look at the survey here. So, this is an existing private road that's been, existing for quite a long time. I also included a picture of the road. And if you noticed, there are two single-family residences on, on this entire parcel of land, and the objective is just to split the two single-family residences to create its own parcel. We have the owners who are here who probably can give us more information in regards to the road, but they're already maintaining the road, they're already aware. And the request, as I said, is just to subdivide the two single-family residences from one to the other.
Okay, thank you. Carol Holesworth?
Yes, ma'am.
Come to the mic, please. Did you have anything that you'd like to add? Staff is indicating that there might be some additional comments that you would like to make.
I have none. I've owned the property for a very, very long time, and everything seems fine.
Okay, all right. Sir, do you have any comments?
I'm her son, Mark, and just a comment to the road from Ms. Lambert, as she stated, it's been there, it's a private drive, it's been there since 1967 that I know of, and she's lived there the whole time, and it's maintained. The folks at the residence there are fine with it as well, or they would have showed up and complained.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak against? I'll close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Robert.
Yes, this is extremely straightforward. This one's easy for me. I move to approve.
Subjected a waiver?
Yes.
Yeah.
Approval with the waiver. I'm not sure how to...
Pardon?
Yes.
Okay, so your motion is to approve with the waiver?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Arsomont.
I second with approval with the waiver.
Okay. We have a motion and a second with the waiver. Please vote.
Motion to approve with waivers carries.
Thank you. All right, we go to item three. Case is 2024-3989-MSP, minor subdivision of 13.122 acres into parcels A and B. Owners, David T. Glass Jr., Anna Glass Huvall, Deanna Glass, Barry Wade Glass, the representative will be Chantel Glass. Surveyor is John G. Cummings and Associates, Parish Council District Representative, Donald Cheryl Tanner. General location, the property is located on the south side of Wallace King Road, east of Louisiana Highway 40, Bush, Ward Two, District Six. Staff?
The applicant is requesting to create two parcels. Parcel A is proposed to be 8.122 acres, and parcel B is proposed to be five acres. The minor subdivision request requires a public hearing due to the property is Zone R1 Rural Residential District, and requires a minimum lot width of 300 feet. The minimum lot width of a proposed parcel A is 274.92 feet along Wallace King Road, and requiring a waiver from the planning commission, and it should be subject to item one, two, three, and four. If you noticed on the survey, this is an existing parcel of land, it's already 274 foot wide, and they're requesting to just, you know, move the property line to readjust here.
Get that straightened back out. Chantel Glass? Good evening.
Hi.
Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No.
Oh, come on now.
I'm just trying to get my son some land to build a house.
Okay. All right, well, let's see what the folks in the audience may have.
Okay.
Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak against? I'll close it to the public and bring it back to the commission.
Thank you.
Commissioner Arsomont.
I move that we approve the petitioner's request with the waivers.
With the waiver, okay. Motion to approve with the waivers, Commissioner Gaines.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gaines. Commissioner, they cleared, okay? So, we have a motion and a second to approve with the waivers. Please vote.
Motion to approve with waivers carries.
Thank you. All right, we move to item four.
No, no, it's all right.
Item four is 2024-3990-MSP, minor subdivision of parcel A into parcels A1 and A2. Owner and representative is Timothy and Elizabeth Beatty. Surveyor is John G. Cummings and Associates, Parish Council District Representative, Honorable Martha Kazabon. General location, the property is located on the west side of Tantella Ranch Road, north of Tantella Ranch Road, east of Louisiana Highway 1077, Folsom, Ward One, District Three. Staff?
The applicant is requesting to create two parcels, parcels A1, which is proposed to be 15.56 acres, and parcel two, which is proposed to be 10 acres. The minor subdivision request requires public hearing due to, as it's shown here in a table, the subject property was approved or went through the minor subdivision process in 2022, and since this is a new request for minor subdivision, it has to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it should be subject to parcel one and two. We've included the current or proposed minor subdivision, as well as the one that was previously approved, where in the past it was created 25 acre and a 15 acre parcel.
Okay, thank you. The Beattys, are you here? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Tim Beatty. I'm the owner. I sold, I had 50, 40 acres to start, sold 15 to a friend, and a friend had a friend that wanted some acreage, so I said, I'll give him another 10 acres. I still have 15 remaining. I just want to parcel up from them. They have 500 foot of road frontage, and it's greater than the minimum acreage that's required in that area of five.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this item? Anyone wish to speak against? I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Robert.
Another easy one for me, this one's very straightforward. Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Robert to approve. There's no waivers on this one. Commissioner Seager.
I second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Seager. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion to approve carries.
All right, we go to item five, which is case 2024-3991-MSP. It's a minor subdivision of 3.999 acres into track one, track two, and track three. Owner is River Oak Investments Group LLC. Naveen Thir, representative is Jeffrey Shane. Surveyor is J.B. Birkin Associates, Parish Council District Representative, Honorable Jeff Corbin. General location, property is located on the south side of Albert Street, and on the east side of Brookter Street, and on the north side of Annie Street, and on the west side of Louisiana Highway 433 and Vault Street, in Slidell, Ward Nine, District 13. Staff?
I'd like to invite you to take a look at the survey that I just distributed before the meeting. Your staff report indicates that the request is to create three tracks of land, and it's what it's shown in the survey in your packet. However, after further discussion with, you know, Mr. Shane, he would like to request, to amend his request and only create two parcels of land, which is proposed to be, would be track one and track three, if I'm not mistaken. And the reason for the minor subdivision that is in front of you is basically because track one, if you noticed, the, the portion of the property is creating some sort of a, some sort of a flag lot, and the portion that is facing Vault Street is only 25 feet. So, this is the purpose, the reason why it's in front of you today. There's a request here to reduce the required minimum lot width from 80 feet to 25 feet, as it is shown on a survey, and the approval should be subject to items one, two, three, four, and five, and as I said, it's only for, to create two parcels instead of three.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Shane.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Honorable Commission. Jeff Shane of the Jones Fussell Law Firm, PO Box 1810 in Covington, representing River Oak Investment Group LLC, which is the owner of the two parcels that will comprise the proposed Track 3A. I appreciate Ms. Lambert clarifying the request that was, the discrepancy, I guess you could say, from what was originally filed and the plat that you have before you this evening. So, hopefully not to overkill, hopefully to simplify. I think it's important that the commission understand that two of these tracks were sold through the years and designated with a track number, despite the fact... despite the fact they had never been submitted to the planning commission for resubmission. So when you look at the plat and you see the lighter shade designation of Track 1, you'll see that right below Track 1A, kind of to the left a little bit. And then if you will also look within Track 3A, you'll see, um, 0.922 acres, also known as Track 3. And you will also see, uh, to the right of that, uh, little bit, 1.00 acre, also known as Track 2. So what we have are three parcels that, what I refer to, they were de facto subdivided. What does de facto mean? They didn't file for the formal minor subdivision approval. They literally were sold out and given a track name, track number. So my client acquired in two separate sales, uh, Track 2 and also Track 3. And so to simplify the request, we wish to combine Track 2 and Track 3. We've obviously complied with the minor subdivision process by coming to you and hope that you see fit to, uh, approve and create Track 3A. As a result of seeking formal re-subdivision approval for Track 2 and Track 3, that leaves the other parcel as a remainder parcel. Again, it was referred to inadvertently, is probably a kind way to reference it, as Track 1, but it needs to be formally recognized as a legal lot of record as well. Hence, it becomes a two-lot minor subdivision, Track 1A, which is identical to the Track 1, I'm sorry, Track, yeah, Track 1 sales made through the years, still 2.077 acres. And I might add that the, two of the owners are here with us this evening. Mr. Donald Laurent here and his sister, because we wanted to make sure that they were aware of what we would do and they actually had contacted Ms. Lambert at staff and she connected me with them this evening. So, um, with regard to, um, sort of the flag lot, if you will, and it wasn't designed to be a flag lot, but that 25-foot, uh, portion that extends and intersects into Vault Road, it does technically require a waiver, but another unique thing about this case is that it currently has a public street within it. Annie Street by maintenance is a public street maintained by St. Tammany Parish, which is pretty unusual to have a street of that width within that width of right-of-way. And because Track 1, again, has been created for some period of time de facto, we really don't have the ability to change the property line, to make it wider. We would simply ask that you, uh, approve the minor subdivision, which includes, of course, a waiver so that Track 1 will continue to have, um, this connection to Vault Road. Now, again, interestingly, if you focus on Track 1, you will see frontage on not only Annie Street. It technically has a little frontage on Vault Road. It's got frontage on Brookter and it's got frontage on Albert Street. And if you're familiar with where the Wendy's is in the southeast quadrant of Old Spanish Trail and I-10, this, and you can see that very clearly on your vicinity map, I might add. You, you can see that Track 1 doesn't depend, I guess is my point, on this 25-foot finger as its sole and only access. If it did, it might raise more concern to you. As to Jeff, is that wide enough? Is that one tasseled dedication enough? But I think we've got more than adequate, uh, access. So as I explained to Mr. Laurent and his sister, um, the request should formalize the ownership that they have, still 2.077 acres, no longer Track 1 but Track 1A, and also combine the two parcels that my client owns into Track 3A. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shane. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor on this? Anyone wish to speak against? You wish to speak against?
No.
Okay. You want to speak in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Come to the microphone.
I'm Donald Laurent, speaking for the Vault family. We talked with Mr. Shane and we have no problem with combining the two pieces of property that they want to combine together into one.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right. Mr. Shane, you got any kind of comment, rebuttal?
I forgot to say one thing I promised them I would say. And as you well know, this is not a request to change zone. It has nothing to do with land use, but I told Mr. Laurent, I would assure them that that is not what this is all about. It's only to create the minor subdivision parcels.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak against? All right, I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Robert.
Uh, yes. Uh, my only concern prior to receiving the new plat was... Yeah, I don't have really any concerns regarding this at this point. I just have a favor to ask. Why is 3, why is it 1A and 3A and not 1A and 2A? It's kind of killing my OCD that we have 1 and 3. And considering the fact that previously named Track 2 is actually larger than Track 3, I would just suggest switching that to 2A, but that's just me. Other than that, motion, uh, move to approve.
As amended with the waiver.
As amended with a waiver, yes.
I guess I don't need to respond to that.
No, no.
Common sense tells me I should sit down and shut up.
I always see these off-the-books resubs and this makes me very happy to see it getting fixed.
Okay. Anything else, Brittany? Okay. Uh, Commissioner Gaines.
Uh, Mr. Shane, I appreciate your, uh, explanation of the plan before us and your common sense attitude and, uh, second.
Second by Commissioner Gaines. With, uh... As amended with the waiver? Right?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion to approve as amended with waivers carries.
Thank you. All right, uh, we go to page 3 on the agenda, item 6. Case is 2024-3992-MSP. It's a minor subdivision of parcel J4A-1 and the parcel J4A-1A and J4A-1B. Owner representative is Marina Bluffs LLC, Garrett Griggs, Land Surveyor, uh, Surveyors Land Surveying LLC, Parish Council District Representative, Honorable Kathy Seaton. General location: Uh, the property is located at the end of Marina Boulevard, Mandeville, Ward 4, District 4. Staff?
The applicant is requesting to create two parcels. One is, um, .132 acres and the other one is proposed to be .30, .348 acres. And if you take a look at the table 1, the reason why it's in front of you is it was approved through the minor subdivision process once in 2018 and in 2022. And also a portion of Marina, Marina Boulevard is located within proposed parcel J4A-1A and does not meet the minimum lot width of 90 feet road frontage required under the S1 Suburban Residential District and requiring a waiver from the planning commission. And the request shall be subject to items, uh, 1 to 6. If you take a look at the proposed survey here, you could see that the objective here is you have a portion of the property that's already, uh, developed with some, um, boat houses and, uh, there will be more boat houses, or one more that's going to be constructed and then the rear of the parcel will be subdivided from that proposed development here. So this is, um, you know, the basis of the request. If you take a look at the previous, uh, minor subdivision that was approved and you have several lots that were, uh, created and, and a road that's constructed, um, for the development of single-family residences.
Okay. Thank you. Is Garrett Griggs here? Good evening.
Good evening, sir. I'm Jeff Montalbano. Jeff Montalbano. Uh, Mr. Griggs is not here.
So you're representing?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, this parcel, um, we originally had it rezoned and subdivided to put boat houses along Marina Boulevard. You know, we're done now with the boat houses and we're, we're stuck with a piece that is attached to this and hooked up with the association. So we want to re-subdivide it and take it away from, from the boathouse association. That's our objective.
Okay. All right. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak against? I'll close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Commissioner Arsima.
Uh, move that we move forward and approve, uh, do I need to say with waivers?
With waivers, okay.
With waivers.
All right, we got a motion to approve with the waiver. Commissioner Robert.
Um, I, I'm sorry. I wanted to make sure I understood this correctly. So parcel J4A-1A, the intention with that parcel is to do a boathouse? Or is that the, is that one? I'm sorry.
If you, if you take a look at the survey, there are already some boat houses that are completed on, on that. So there, there will be one more if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Montalbano could probably confirm this here. But it's, this is, uh, this is an association in regards to those boat houses, that parcel J4A-1B. But there's a residual parcel that is not part of this and they're just wishing to remove that remaining portion from that association. And Mr. Montalbano maybe can explain it a little better than I can if I'm... Hopefully I'm using the correct words here, but...
I'm just, no, that's perfect. I'm just curious, was there intention to do any type of development on 1A? J4A, 1A in the future? Or is that going to be just kind of left as a parking spot for trailers as it looks like it is right now? That's my only hesitation.
Hopefully, uh, we expect to at a later point clean up that whole area that, that you just referenced and get rid of all of that and possibly do, uh, another development there at a later date.
Okay. All right, uh, Commissioner Gaines.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Gaines. Any further discussion? Please vote. That's with the waiver too, right?
Yes.
Motion to approve with waivers carries.
All right, we move on to item 7, which is case 2024-3996-MSP. It's a minor subdivision of 14.80 acres, uh, parcel into parcels A, B, C, D, and E. Owner and representative is Jason Van Halen, uh, Edward Schmidt Jr. and Cynthia B. Schmidt. Uh, surveyor is Land Surveying LLC. Uh, Parish Council District Representative is Honorable Larry Rowling. General location: Property is located on the west side of Louisiana Highway 437, north of Playmakers Road, Covington, Ward 3, District 2. Staff?
The applicant is requesting to create five parcels. Parcels A, B, C, and D are proposed to be 3 acres and Parcel E is proposed to be 2.76 acres. And the minor subdivision requires public, public hearing due to, as shown on the survey, parcels A, B, C, D, and E are proposed to be accessed from a 35-foot private drive and requiring approval from the planning commission. The proposed name of the private road is identified, um, here on your staff report. It's proposed to be Hunter Oaks Lane and requiring approval from the planning commission. Also requesting a waiver to construct the 35-foot access right-of-way and the required drainage prior to approval from the building permits on parcels A, B, C, and D. And the note will have to be added to, to the plat. And the minor subdivisions should be subject to items 1 to 7.
Okay. Thank you. All right, uh, need someone representing this case? Good evening.
Good evening.
And you are?
Jason Van Halen, 68420 Bodie Avenue.
Okay.
Just looking to, uh, provide the community with some larger lots, you know? I know, I'm not really a, for the, the small subdivisions and whatnot, so I try to do this, um, to, uh, provide some larger lots.
Okay. Anything else? Not right now, huh?
No, sir, not yet.
All right, anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor on this? Anyone wish to speak against? I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Gaines.
I, I'm shocked that, uh, there's not more public comment on this one. Uh, the only, the concern I have on this is, um, I'm a frequenter of Lee Road. This is a, uh, a very highly trafficked, um, in fact, my mother-in-law li- literally lives about 400 feet from this. It's in a blind, it's in a turn on Lee Road. This traffic's going to be going 55 miles an hour. My only question is, is 35, is a 35-foot right-of-way, is that a wide enough to create a turn to, off of Lee Road onto there? Uh, I, I'm actually, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to address this to staff. Is that a, is that a wide enough area to create a, a turn off of a two-lane highway?
Uh, that's our, I mean, that's the typical required, uh, servitude for a minor subdivision. I will say too that I believe DOT has already permitted this access. If I'm not mistaken, it is a state highway.
Yeah, yeah.
So they had, um, no concerns with it either, but yes, sir. I mean, it's, it's what we typically use on any other state highway. Um, if they want to improve the radiuses and things like that to give a better turning radius within the plans when they develop the civil plans, something we can absolutely look at. Um, but 35-foot is wide enough to meet our minimum requirements. They can always choose to do more if they would like to, but they are meeting the minimum requirement, yes, sir.
There's no other way to get on this property, is there? Man.
That's why I went to the OTD first.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that was my next question, so...
We have the permit.
Yeah, yeah. And so what's the, I mean, normally my colleague is here and he knows more about like, uh, cut-ins and stuff like that. So, you know, what kind of, what are, what are the requirements that they're, they're making you do to, to allow that access in?
No.
Nothing?
My engineer's here, Darrell Fissell.
Perfect. You get my, you get my concern, right?
Yeah, no, I...
And there's like deep, deep ditches on each side of that road right there, so I'm just, that's why I'm concerned.
Yeah, so we, uh, I'm Darrell Fissell, Aero Engineering. And, um, yeah, so we have the driveway permit from the state and, uh, and we, it's either 35-foot radius or 50-foot radius on the road.
Okay.
And, uh, that's why Jason wanted to get...
It's a 35-foot radius to get in?
Yeah. I mean, it, when you drive down Highway 21 or Lee Road, you know, there's a lot of older roads that don't have a 35-foot...
I know.
You know, so, but, so anyway.
That's why, and it's one of the most, one of the most accident-prone roads in the parish too, so I just...
But we do have it.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I'm, I'm going to think about this one for a minute.
Pardon?
I'm going to think about this one for a minute.
All right, Commissioner Robert.
Thank you. Yes, the brook was also my concern. I grew up at Playmakers every summer, almost every Christmas. Every day as a teenager, going back in that area. It's scary right there, but I also know that the DOT restrictions on access connection permits are pretty tight. They will address the turn radius on either side. They will address, they, they specify the culvert size that needs to go underneath that drive. I did check the drainage on this property. I mean, it looks great. Just please beef that road up and make it decent because I have been on Playmakers Road when it starts to get really wet and back in that area and it is terrifying. So, um, my, I would move to approve.
With waivers.
With waivers.
Motion by Commissioner Robert to approve with waivers. Commissioner Seager.
Yeah, um, I don't know. I'm going to give a little bit more information. Stafford Road, which is 1081, comes in right there. Palm Boulevard, which is a subdivision of more than 50 homes, is right there. It's a, it's a blind turn. It's a bad place to put anything. It's dangerous, it's going to be more dangerous. It's, I understand that it's, you know, it's, no matter, if it's one house there or five houses there, it's dangerous. There's developments going in right across 437 that are estate-sized lots. You can see them in red. I'll shut up now. I just wanted to bring that information to the commission.
Okay. Commissioner Martino.
Yeah, so also knowing this area, of course, we all agree that term there. At one time I lived down Palm Boulevard. We used to take an alternate route, I guess it's Alpha. I never knew the name of the road. But I always used it to access either Stafford or go down to the other cut-through, Planchet, I believe, across from the convenience store. But I say all of this because residents down Palm Boulevard, it was much more traffic, whether it be deliveries or just local homeowners. What I, what I, obviously we all see is this would be three estate lots, three private lots with no additional access. I'm sorry, five. Five total, without creating a cut-through, if you will. So, that's a good thing, I believe. Minimizes traffic and mainly folks coming in. I would recommend to certainly look at that opening to Lee Road, the few times, but it's inevitable, there's going to be someone who is either waiting to pull out while another car is waiting to pull into this proposed new driveway or new road. So, going above and beyond, it would be just a recommendation that, you know, I can just say, but not, not something I would make an additional on this waiver. I don't see much of an issue. I think it's a great spot. I like the lot sizes. I would make a motion to approve. I'm sorry, I would second the motion to approve with the, with the waivers.
With the waiver, okay. All right, Commissioner Gaines.
Yes, I thought about it a minute. It's, the, the road is not your responsibility. And I fully support your right to develop your land, okay? So it's a, it's a, do I love it? No, but that, my, my sentiment on that does not, is not relevant to the conversation. So, it's a, I, I support my, the comments from my fellow commissioners and everything, and I, I support it as well.
Okay, we have a motion and a second with waiver. Please vote.
Motion to approve with waivers, Carrie's.
Thank you. All right, we go to item eight, which is case 2024 dash 4008 dash MSP. Minor subdivision of 10.01 acres, 20.38 acres, and 25.64 acres into parcels A, B, and C. Owner and representative is Andrew and Lauren Mendheim. Surveyor Shangji Cummings and Associates. Parish Council District Representative, Honorable Martha Kazaban. General location, the property is located at the end of Chanel Road and on the west side of Dreamland Court, Balsam, Ward two, District three. Staff?
The applicant is requesting to create three parcels. Parcel A being 30.39 acres. Parcel B 12.82 acres. And parcel C being 12.82 acres. Just distributed here, a revised staff report here. And the minor subdivision requires public hearing due to the subject property is on R1 Rural Residential District, which requires a minimum lot width of 300 feet. The minimum lot width of the proposed parcel A is roughly 90 foot along Chanel Road and requiring a waiver from the planning commission. The minimum lot width of proposed parcel B is 86 feet along Dreamland Court and requiring a waiver from the planning commission. And also, there is a proposed access servitude through parcel C to access parcel B, which it's a 35-foot access driveway servitude, which it requires a waiver from the planning commission. And the request shall be subject to items one, two, and, number one and number two.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commission. My name is Andrew Mendheim. I am here on behalf of myself and my wife. I live at 80410 Chanel Road, which if you're familiar with the area, is at the very dead end of Chanel Road. Though staff has, I think, accurately articulated my request, I do want to be clear that the proposed lot widths are not 90 and 89 feet respectively, all right? If you, if you, and this may be getting into semantics, all right? But if you look at the survey, it's, it's clear that parcel A is 660 feet wide, that parcel B will be 421 feet wide, parcel C will be 421 feet wide likewise. So, I appreciate that, I just wanted to make that clarification. And at the end of the day, I think the request is, well, I think it's very simple. But prior to making it, maybe I'd like to give a little bit of context here. So, as it exists today, I own three parcels of land. One is a 20.38 acre parcel, which lies at the very end of Chanel Road. One is a 10.01 acre parcel, which is frankly in the middle of the woods, but it does have legal access via servitude to Brule Road. And then there's likewise a 25.64 acre parcel, which is a buts to the 10-acre parcel and has some frontage on Dreamland Court. So those are the three parcels that I, that I currently own. Now, my goal for these three parcels is to do as follows. I'd like to take the 10.01 acre parcel and add it to my 20.38 acre parcel, making it parcel A as reflected on the survey. And then I'd like to take the 25.64 acre parcel and divide that into two parcels, two equal-sized parcels, 12.82 acre, 12.82 acres each. And those are parcels B and C respectively on the survey. So, when it's all said and done, I'm not technically creating three lots. I'm more or less reconfiguring the way that the lot lines are, all right? I have three legal parcels, three legal lots of record. And assuming for a moment that I'll get the approval, I'll, I'll leave with three legal lots. So, there's no net increase in density or anything like that. Really, again, the only reason that we're here for, for a request of a waiver is because of public, public road frontage requirements. I think pursuant to the UDC, ideally, created lots would have 300 feet of road frontage. And as you can clearly see on the survey, guys, that all of these properties sit at the dead ends, the very ends of the roads of Chanel and Dreamland Courts respectively. And thus, there's just no more public road frontage to go around. That's it. There's really, I, I'd be glad to comply with having 300 feet of road frontage for parcel A. I'd be happy to comply with having 600 feet of road frontage for parcels B and C. But unfortunately, there's just no more public road. And so that's the nature of the request. And I see I've got a little bit more time and it may be that I'll need some time for rebuttal. So if at all possible, I'll reserve that time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor? All right, we'll go to those that are wishing to speak against. Kathy Arcardo. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Arcardo and I live on 16271 Brule Road in Dreamland, butts up to Brule Road. I'm speaking in opposition to this case. My concern is where the property is located at the end of Dreamland Court and it connects to Chanel Road, that eventually there will be a cut-through where people will use Brule Road to access Chanel Road to get to Highway 40. And that would increase the traffic. The back of parcels, two of the parcels, Michael Branch runs through there. And I'm concerned about flooding in that part because that runs behind a lot of the properties there. So, I'm opposed to it for that reason.
Okay, thank you. All right, I have another call on Rhonda Haas. Good evening.
I have a concern also with the frontage of the lots. I had spoke to Martha and she says the intentions were to put a road through Chanel Farms to Dreamland. I'm not sure if they would actually have enough road. We are concerned about traffic. It's very quiet back there. And I have a big concern of the five houses that they're going to have built on the Chanel side, I think she said, and maybe some on Dreamland. So I'm a little concerned of how that's going to play out further down the road. I also have a big concern for the flooding. I'm probably about 40 acres from them, where he proposes to do these upgrades and so forth in Chanel Farms. I have that Michael Branch coming through my property. I have a video that could show you that when we have a hard rain, just in January, that rain comes close, that flooding comes down to the rivers and everything else. It was maybe 50 feet from my house. My house does have a slope. We don't really concern it, but my land is useless. I live on maybe an acre of land. That's all I have access to. I don't mind, that's why I bought the property. But if you want to see the video of how much water comes through this area, what are they going to do to fix the drainage? We're not supposed to put any, bring in any soil or any kind of matter like that into the property. I know I couldn't. I wasn't allowed to. And engineering actually said I would have to take it from my property in a certain area only if I wanted to build up the house even higher at elevation. That's basically it, so I don't know what else. I mean, I do have a problem with the waiver of the 300 feet, like I said, and actually the flooding. But that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Clarrett.
Good evening, Council. Gary Clarrett, 800-88 Dreamland Court. And I'm opposed to this. I am about three properties from where this gentleman is proposing this, whatever it is, his property division. And I'm opposed to the fact of having an access road cut from the end of Dreamland up to Chanel for the traffic situation the previous lady just said. And also concerned for the flood situation. As it stands right now, right next to her property, I've already seen the water going over Brule Road in just a heavy rain. And if they build a bridge crossing Michael Branch, although they say the 100-year flood will be fine, I'm against that. I just don't go for it. Because I'm on the east side of Dreamland Court. And I have Bill's Creek behind my house that runs through my property. When I bought the property in 2017, that creek was approximately 20 to 25 feet wide. I actually have a J-hook on that creek that runs through my property. Now, that creek is almost 50 foot wide, maybe wider. I haven't measured it, but I'm losing trees continuously because of the erosion of the land. And I don't want my neighbors on the other side of the creek, other side of the street, rather, to go through the same thing. And I can't get anybody to clear them because nobody can touch it. So I have to do it myself, just to clear so the debris from, since the upgrades on Marywood and the drainage, it's created a problem for me downstream. And I'm not in favor of this at all. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more call. Sherling Brignak. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Sherling Brignak and I live at 80069 Dreamland Court. I've lived back there for 30 years. Matter of fact, we're one of the ones that built Dreamland Court and hooks into Brule Road. We enjoy living on that road because it is a dead end. And we're hoping you do not plan on opening up Dreamland to Chanel Farm. Brule Road is a very dangerous road. It has very dangerous curves. And Michael Branch does flood. It backs up on Brule Road where you can cross over it. We enjoy the fact that our children and grandchildren can ride their bikes up and down Dreamland Court. And we don't have to worry about telling them, move out the way because it's constantly having cars going back and forth. Yes, you do have a right to develop your land. But we ask that you do not open it up to Chanel Farms where we can have all kind of people coming in from Highway 40. Brule Road cannot handle this. Buses have to move to the side when people are trying to drive down Brule Road. Michael Branch is, is bad. Many times we've gone back there and they have beaver dams being formed. Where we've had to go back there and try to break it up to keep the water from backing up into Marywood. I have friends living in Marywood that we've had to tell them, hey, we got to get back there and try to do something. So please take in consideration, Brule Road is a very dangerous road. Yes, this man does have a right to develop his property. And I have no objection if he wants his two 12-acre pieces back there. But don't allow him to open up Dreamland and connect it to Chanel Farms. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, time has expired, so we'll go to rebuttal.
I, I appreciate the comments from the, from the public. There's a saying that a rumor will make it halfway around the yard before the, halfway around the world before the truth has had a chance to put its shoes on. And unfortunately, the, the rumor with respect to a road being cut through from Dreamland Court to Chanel Road is just that. It's baseless, there's absolutely, it is unequivocally untrue. I've never had any intent on doing so, nor do I have any intent on doing so. Similarly to some of these folks, I live at the very end of Chanel Road. Zero traffic comes past me. I'm not interested in any way, shape, or form creating a situation where now traffic does come past me, all right? So I can, I can assure you that even if I wanted to do that, which I promise I don't, my wife would give me way more problems with doing that than the public could ever possibly do, all right? So I, I want to assure everyone, guys, I have absolutely no intent on connecting Chanel Road to Dreamland Court. None whatsoever. As it relates to the flooding, I likewise live on, I, I think they're referring to it as Michael Branch. Some, some flood maps call it Teresa Branch. Teresa Branch, Michael Branch, one way or the other, all right? So, I have a vested interest to likewise see that, that there's no major impacts to the, to this waterway because the first person that it's going to backwater up on will be me. So I can assure you that I don't have any intent on doing that. And as I stated earlier, guys, I have three legal parcels right now. I'm reconfiguring the lot lines such that I have three legal parcels. There's no net increase in density. And thus, there's no net increase in traffic and there's no net increase in any stormwater runoff. There's three legal parcels as it currently exists. After the fact, I, I hope that there's three legal parcels. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Those of you that spoke against, we're in rebuttal phase, so come back up one at a time and you're welcome to speak in rebuttal.
So I just want to make sure we are not developing the five housing that you're thinking of in Chanel Farms.
You're thinking about something else.
Okay, I'll have to talk with Martha. Okay, and it's, there's no road access at all.
Speak.
I'm sorry, no road access at all, right?
And can I address these?
Yes.
I'm sorry, he's saying.
I just, I just want to know if that's all it's going to be. No road access on Brule Road and the drainage. That is the only concerns I think all of us actually have. So my concern is, will that back area on Chanel area be developed into other homes? You're just saying no. Is that correct? Future development, I want to know. Is that possible?
Yes.
I can't? Okay. I, who's going to answer it?
Come, come back up to the microphone if you will and address the question.
So I'll, I'll address her questions to you guys. No, Parcel A, guys, is where I live, all right? I have absolutely no intent whatsoever on subdividing that further, all right? Now, again, I'm from Folsom. I've lived there for the entirety of my life. I, I intend on living there for the remainder of my life. And so, no, I have no intent on developing Parcel A any further whatsoever, nor do I, again, just want to reiterate that I have no intentions whatsoever on connecting Dreamland Court with Chanel Road. Just as much as these folks, I don't want to see traffic cut through there either, all right? It would absolutely increase traffic on both Chanel Road and Dreamland Court. I have no interest in doing that whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am, did that take care of your question?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anyone else in, that's against wish to speak?
I didn't speak before. I have some, I am Caroline Cabs and I live at 208 Orleans Avenue in Marywood.
After you speak, I need you to fill out a speaker card.
Got it for you.
Okay.
So that, my question would be this, and these are for you, obviously, and I do believe that, I do believe that you have the right to develop your property as you want, as long as it doesn't impose a burden on your neighbors, okay, who were there before. So my thoughts behind this are an engineering study for the flooding concerns, a retention pond based on the size of the engineering study for the flooding concerns for future development on this property, and what do you intend to build on the property? Roads you intend to build, fill you intend to bring in, and how, how much is that going to be built up that then causes flooding in other areas?
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak? Okay.
13 seconds.
Pardon?
13 seconds.
13 seconds. All right, you said on Parcells B and C. C, you said you was going to cut back into?
Sir, you have to address the bit.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, Gary, 800-88-DREAMLAND-COURT. The gentleman said, if I'm not mistaken, he was going to take Parcel C and take it from whatever the acreage was and cut it down into two separate properties? And there's no access road? And as far as the drainage, who does that fall on? Him or the parish?
More likely the parish. Something that they all work out one way or the other, right Ted?
I'm curious if we're not talking too different. When, if and when he ever sells these properties or develop them, there is always a building permit requirement that will require them to provide a drainage and fill plan for these sites. It sounds like, from what I'm hearing from a lot of the residents, that they're concerned about the branch as a whole and as we know, that, you know, respectfully, that is where the water's going to go. The Michael Branch is, is where this whole area drains through, which is why a large portion of all this property is in a flood zone. So if we have drainage concerns out here as it relates to the entirety of the branch, that is a parish project, not the responsibility of the developer or the, the landowner. If they're concerned about what will come from the building permits, that is a requirement with the building permit to provide a drainage and fill plan when and if those properties ever get developed. So I, I think they might be intermingled a little bit, and I mean that respectfully, is that they're concerned about the, the branch, from what I gathered, draining and flooding and backing up, which we know does. That's, that's, that's every water feature we have in the parish during certain rate events, but that would be parish function, whereas development of the lot would be the developer or the landowner at that time. I, I hope I answered that question correctly.
It's definitely not going to back up because they're higher over there than we are down here. It's going to go around.
I meant the entirety of it.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, the time's expired now on both sides, so I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Gaines.
So I want to, this, I just want to make sure that we're clarifying for myself and for everybody else. Just want, yeah, come up to the microphone, Mr. Menheim. So what I'm looking at is a minor subdivision. It's not a planned development. I don't see any plans on here. There's no development plan built in here. It's just you're redesigning your lot lines that, on property that you already own.
That, that's an accurate way of putting it, absolutely.
Okay, so there's no development that you're planning in the future? You're just re-subdividing your, your property?
Well, I do intend on selling Parcells B and C.
Sure.
That's it. That's the extent of it.
But you're not going to personally develop it yourself?
I am not.
Correct. So that any, any future development is going to come before the planning department and they're going to have to fulfill all of the requirements that you guys are talking about. This is just, he's just redoing the lot lines. There's no plan built in here. There's no road on any kind of plan that we have in front of us. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Staff, if they were, if he was to try to put a road in, would it have to come before you? And, and would that come before us or would that go to a public hearing?
I'd like to clarify, so if he's trying to put a private driveway for like a single-family one residential home that will be permitted through a building permit, the permits and inspections office, and they have their own set of requirements, just like every other lot that has a driveway to and from their residence.
But that's a driveway?
That is a driveway. If they tried to build anything greater than a driveway, a private drive or a major road, that absolutely would have to come through permitting for.
And that's not what this is?
That is not what this is, that's not what this map shows on.
Just as a point of clarification, I just want to point out to you, and this is the reason for the, the revised staff report, is that the access to Parcel B, the driveway to access to Parcel B will not be through Dreamland Court. They will go through Parcel C to get to Parcel B. I know that it's very difficult to read on a survey, but if, if you look at on Parcel C, it says 35-foot driveway servitude. So there will be a servitude that will go through Parcel C and go through Parcel B. But this is the end. You know, there's going to be just a single driveway from Parcel C to Parcel B to access the, the single-family residence that's going to be built over there. There's not going to be no connection to Chanel Road or to any other parcels of land. So this is just, there will be an access through Parcel C to get to the, the house that will be constructed on Parcel C and a, and a driveway that will be constructed to get to Parcel B, and that's the only two driveway that will be existing on those two parcels.
I just wanted to make sure that the residents, I'm a resident of Folsom as well, okay? I used to go swimming on the rural bugger flag. We'd go park by the cemetery and go back there swimming. I know Brule Road intimately. So I just wanted you guys to have peace of mind of what was going on here so that when, when we in Folsom, we hear the D-word, development, boy, we just all come out the woodwork and we're going to make sure what's going on, right? I, I get it. So I just wanted to make sure you guys are kind of put at ease as to what the, what the plan was and what this was, purpose was. Is that, now, I will call on any of you guys to come up if you have any other questions to make sure that you are, your mind is at ease on this before we move forward. Does anybody, everybody's good? All right, with that, I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Gaines.
With the waivers.
To approve with the waiver, right?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Robert.
Yes, I am not from Folsom. My sister lives out there now, but I am a certified floodplain manager, so the first thing I look at anytime we get a case is the flood, the firm panels, preliminary, which in St. Tammany, you know, critical drainage area. And I just wanted to also kind of put your mind at ease on this. I did pull the flood insurance rate map for this property. I can see exactly where Teresa or Michael Branch, you know, falls. And Mr. Menheim, somebody would have to be nuts to put their home that far back into the back of the property. I'm not sure if anybody wants to look at this. Michael Branch is across the rear portion of that lot. The elevations close, are, by Dreamland Court are so much higher and also on the other property, Parcel A, near Chanel. And you were correct, the lady who was in here earlier who said that she had to mitigate her fill on one acre. Nobody wants to have to do that, especially on 12.82 acres. So whomever buys this parcel is going to inevitably put their home closer to the road. So that was my only concern. I do have a question for planning. Is extending Dreamland Court an option in terms of maybe asphalt or it's, it's a, is it asphalt or is it gravel right now?
So if you see on the survey, it shows where the end of the asphalt road ends.
Correct. I do see that.
So this is, this is the access that they have or the frontage that they have on Parcel C. So if you, if you take a look, the driveway to Parcel C and it will, will go into that portion there and then there will be a servitude of access that will go through Parcel C to Parcel B.
That's what I was, okay, that's what I was looking at. So I mean, again, it costs a lot of money to build out a parish road. Nobody, it's about, last time I spoke with Public Works, it was $250 to $300 a linear foot. I can't imagine anybody wanting to extend that beyond these properties at that rate. So I think, you know, for what you guys are concerned with as residents in the surrounding area, this is the best bet for what could, could happen with this property. So that, keeping that in mind, I make a motion to second with, and approve the waivers. Seconded with, and approve the waivers, yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Arsemont.
Yep, my comment is, these meetings are wonderful for being able to have the public come in and first of all, hear what's going on and also be able to voice their, their concerns. The only concern I have with Mr. Andrew or with the residents is had, you know, if y'all had gotten together, maybe you could have saved a little bit of your time and, and of course, we, we welcome to be here all night. It's not a problem for us, but it would have just saved you some communication issues. It seemed like that, I don't know if y'all were able to get together or if even that's even was possible, but just wanted to make sure that that could have saved you a little time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Seager.
The guy just wants to increase the size of his land. He's already got three.
Okay.
Just wants to attend to his own personal thing.
Commissioner Martino.
Oh, no, everything's been addressed. I think, I think the audience, your, your neighbors seem a lot more relieved, so straightforward, nothing else.
Okay, thank you. And Legal has a comment?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay. You just want to see if I was paying attention.
That's right.
All right, we've got a motion and a second with waivers. Please vote.
Motion to approve with waivers carries.
All right, we go to re-subdivision. Item nine, cases 2024-3994-MRP, minor re-subdivision lots 51AA and 52AA into lot 52AA-1 and Lake Ramsey, Phase 3. The owner and representative is Arthur H. Arnold Jr. and Nancy Vitrono Arnold. The surveyors, surveyors Ronald Brown and Associates, Parish Council District Representative, Honorable Martha Casbon. General location, property is located on the north side of River Lake Drive, east of Lake Bend Drive, Covington, Ward 3, District 3. Staff?
The applicant is requesting to create one lot from existing lots 51AA and 52AA, which is proposed to be .46 acres. The minor subdivision requires a public hearing due to, as stated in the restrictive covenants of the plot, no lot shall be further re-subdivided without approval from the planning commission and the request shall be subject to items one and two.
Thank you. Arnold, sorry. There she comes. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Shelley Dotree. My parents are Arthur and Nancy. They're out of town celebrating their 50th anniversary, so I'm here on the path.
Okay.
But they're, they would like to combine their lots. They have two beautiful lots. They have a home that's kind of partitioned like more on one lot and the second lot has some beautiful oak trees that my mom definitely wants to preserve and, and keep it intact. It's a beaut, it's a beautiful property, so, but she's got two very large oak trees on her property that definitely need to be preserved.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor on this? Anyone wish to speak again? I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Robert.
I love this. I mean, we're reducing density. We're allowing your parents to have a nicer, you know, yard. Move to a perv.
Okay, Commissioner Arsemont.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arsemont. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion to approve carries.
Thank you. All right, we go to hold business. This is item 11 on the agenda. Cases 2024-3875-MSA, requests to waive the minimum construction standards for a private drive which provides access to more than one lot or parcel on, parcel A1A and A1B which have been recorded per map file number 6316B. Owner and representative is Timothy Beatty. Surveyor John G. Cummings and Associates. Representative is Honorable Martha Casbon. General location, the property is located on the east side of Louisiana Highway 1077, north of Tantella Ranch Road, Folsom, Ward 1, District 3. Staff?
Parcells A1A and A1B were created administratively through the minor subdivision process in June of 2024. While both parcels have direct road frontage on 1077, the request is submitted to allow for the existing curb cuts driveway from Highway 1077 to be able to serve both parcels. And the objective of the request is to reduce the number of curb cuts along Highway 1077 and also to preserve more trees on both parcels. And basically, the request here is to allow the driveway that is shown on the drawing that is in the back of the survey here, and it shows you the location of the driveway as well as the access to Parcel A1A. And they're requesting to waive the requirements to build a road up to the minor subdivision standards. On your staff reports, you have a long list of all the requirements for the minor subdivision standards of the private road. So they're basically asking to have one curb cut on Highway 1077 that would serve two single-family residences and the waiver would be of the requirements to build that road. And it would be subject to, of course, submitting a road maintenance agreement and also get it recorded with the agreement that this road will be only at, for the purpose of those two parcels.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm back again. I'm Tim Beatty, this is my son, Chris. He has a lot in front of me. I bought this property, it's just north of the 40 acres where I did the subdivision. I bought it for my family, so hopefully more kids will come in there and access this. The, the, if you're familiar with 1077 with the canvas, the canopy of oak, school over top of 1077, my property is just right. my property is just right after that on the right.
Is that the gate?
No, it's, well, it's a black gate. I just put it in. It's a gate access there. So I have a beautiful entrance. I preserved all my oaks there and everything. So he has the lot in front of me. I sit behind him. He's in front of me. We want access to the same gate so that we don't have to build a second one in there. I really don't want to put another access for safety reasons on that major highway. I have an access...
I don't know that you would be able to get it anyways.
Well, I have an access servitude here for this property, such that it's in my name and my wife's name, his name and his wife's name only. We know that if I sell or he sells in the future, we're going to have to build a road into that property, and that's built into the servitude. The servitude also has a maintenance agreement. I will maintain the road as the owner. I have pictures of the access road that I have. I am so close to the minimum requirements for, I have 35 to 45 acres of, 35 feet of opening. My gravel that's on top and is built to standard is anywhere from 18 to 20 feet. So I'm really close. I just don't have a ditch on one side or the other side. The drainage in this area goes, the road runs east-west. The drainage goes north-south. I have six culverts in that driveway all the way back to my property. So we're just asking that we use one.
Okay.
I have pictures if you need it, and I have the access servitude. This is, this is actually, the servitude is actually being recorded in the, with the parish.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak against? All right. I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Robert.
Goodness, am I first on everyone tonight? I love this one. Preserve the tree canopy, less curb cuts on a highway, I mean, less culverts put out there. I would actually have a note. I recommend adding additional road maintenance terms to the private servitude since both parcels will be utilizing it. It is so long, but it sounds like you've already done that. So...
It's in the servitude.
Yes. Yeah. So I move to approve.
With the waiver.
With the waiver.
With the waivers. Thank you.
Very much.
Okay. Motion to approve with the waivers. Commissioner Gaines.
You guys, I know exactly where you're at. You did a great job. I appreciate preserving that area in ways. I used to drive that every day going to college, so, from Folsom, so I appreciate it. I second.
Second by Commissioner Gaines. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion to approve with waivers carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We go to new business. Amendments to the Code of Ordinances, Part Two, Unified Development Code, Chapters 100 through 900. This is item 12 on the agenda.
Which means you should...
We got two or three pieces of paper here that are in item 12. Commissioner Arsemont.
Can, but I'm ready to make a motion to approve, to be able to present to the Parish Council as you have it.
I like that.
There we go.
You've already had a meeting.
Motion by Commissioner Arsemont to approve. Commissioner Gaines.
I second.
Second by Commissioner Gaines. Mr. Robert.
No, I was going to second. I read through it all this morning.
Yeah. We already, we already had a meeting on this, so it's...
I feel we're cheating the public if we don't read it all the way through.
Because you didn't read it all the way through. You had to do your homework.
All right. So we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do you have to read the title into record just for the benefit of the record?
Uh...
I didn't want to stop your momentum, but I just want to make sure.
Well, I did read the amendments to the code and whatever's written there.
Okay.
Okay? I think that satisfied the legal requirement.
Okay.
Okay? So we have a motion and a second to approve. Please vote.
Motion to approve carries.
Ain't no public here.
13 was something new.
We got one more item here.
It's a resolution.
All right. This is item 13. The Resolution to Request that the St. Tammany Parish Council amend the St. Tammany Parish Code of Ordinances, Part Two, Unified Development Code, Section 100-2.2C7, to increase the per diem for the Planning and Zoning Commission members. Staff, you have any comment?
There's a...
All right. Commissioner Arsemont.
Again, I say absolutely I would approve this motion.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Arsemont. Commissioner Robert.
Yeah, I'm just letting you guys know, I'm abstaining from this one. As the newest member, I don't want people to think that I came onto this commission and said we're not making enough money, so I'm going to abstain. And I just want to let you all know.
Well, it didn't ever say, Brittany, it says it actually in the...
Oh, you're so cute.
Commissioner Seager.
I second.
Second by Commissioner Seager. Please vote.
I think we need to hold back and see if Carlos Hernandez has...
Motion to approve carries.
What can I... And I've been on this for a month. Two months.
You deserve a raise.
I don't want people looking at me. Oh, she got on there and started asking about my...
All right.
No, no. Oh, no. You were in the...
Carlo, Legal's saying I need to get a public comment, and you're the only public here, so...
We have, we've never, I've been on for a while.
1994.
Yeah.
Did I have to come up? No.
Well, if you wish to make a comment, yeah.
I, I don't, it's difficult for me not to recommend that the commission members get what they deserve. What they deserve is, there's no, there's no amount of money, I think, that can, that can take care of the, of the, of the commission members, okay? Generally, they're, they're, they're given as providing free service, which is essentially what they're doing at $50 or $100 per, per meeting. I just want to point out, though, that you're going to go before a Parish Council, that's the one that's going to make a recommendation. And right now, as you, I think most of you all know, that they are not able to fund in 2025 the Sheriff's Office, the District Attorney's Office, and other offices to the level that they got in 2024. So I personally believe that it's going to be difficult for them to justify, even though you deserve it, to get an increase in this. I should also say that you need to look at the state law, which presently says that the $50 is in the state law right now. So that's, that's also going to have to be amended in case this does proceed. So thank you for allowing me to say that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We had a motion and a second, right? And then we had a vote. Pardon? I understand. I just stating that for the record.
State...
So we have...
How the commission is paid. When we were in the training last week, I believe it was discussed that the budget for this commission comes directly out of fees from the Planning and Development Office. Is that correct?
If I'm not mistaken.
That, I would feel more comfortable with that. That way, members of the public don't think that we are actually dipping into tax dollars that, as Mr. Carlos stated, are already few and far between. So could we just ask the council to address that at that meeting so that it doesn't look like we're being greedy? Is there a way to do that?
I think, I think we... I mean, ask or we speak with the council?
If you looked at all the paperwork, I mean...
This is, this is just a resolution asking, asking them to consider an increase. It will be up to them to do an ordinance.
I got you. Okay.
Who proposed it? Because we didn't.
So...
You, he did a commissioner training.
There was, there was some paperwork in the packet, okay, that took it back to the time when Barry Baggar initially made the motion for the $50 way back when.
Got you.
Okay? So this, this is just amending...
I'm good. I'm down with it.
The resolution.
Arsemont has a comment.
So my, my comment, Ms. Brittany, my comment into the other commissioners, I think what you said, if we had spoken, if it's part of your comment in this, I think that was, I appreciate you doing that. So is her comment about that in, going to be in the recording?
Yes.
Okay. That's all. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Do I need a second?
Yes.
Second. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.